Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety Committee. I am Mark Conway, Chair of the Committee and Representative of the 4th District. Today, we have two hearings scheduled. The first is 25-0018, Emergency Scene, Unauthorized Persons Prohibited. And the second is 25-0005, Arson Offender Registry Registrational Requirement. In attendance today, we have, of course, myself, Chair of the Committee, my Vice Chair, Zach Blanchard, representing the 11th District, Councilwoman Porter, representing the 10th District, Councilwoman Gray, representing the 8th District. We have visitors, Councilman Parker of the 1st District, and Councilwoman Ramos, one of the sponsors from the 14th District. We can jump into it. Actually, we have, I'm gonna go a little out of order. We're gonna start with 0005, the arson offender registry, because this one is relatively straightforward. And then we'll jump into 25-001. Oh, actually, Ampry has to go, right? So, yeah, we're gonna start with the emergency scene, unauthorized persons prohibited. This is Bill 25-0018, for the purpose of prohibiting the presence of an unauthorized person within the boundaries of an emergency scene, establishing certain penalties, defining certain terms, in generally relating to the unauthorized persons within the boundaries of an emergency scene. This bill is introduced on February 10th, 2025, by Councilmember Ramos. Forgive me, Councilmember. And I will turn it over to Councilmember Ramos for opening statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee. Thanks for holding this hearing and for taking us first. I do have Delegate Ampry, who's gonna testify after me, and he is in a timeframe, so I do appreciate the indulgence. This Bill 2800, sorry, 250018, comes from a lot of work that I've done in my district over the last five years. As many of you also do, my colleagues do, go to our fires to see if we can help our residents and support our first responders. And there are lots of things that I think we've already started to improve on. We've got the victim services that are starting to show up at the fires. Red Cross has been great. And what this bill does is it establishes a very defined emergency scene. So it could be a fire, it could be another disaster. That's, so there will be a defined emergency scene that the fire chief or their designee on the scene establishes. And it could be used as a tape, or it could be some other type of barrier. And only certain people are allowed inside that tape. It is our first responders. It is, which includes firefighters, EMTs and EMS, Baltimore Police Department, obviously, the survivors of the fire, any family members. I do have in the bill Department of Housing and Community Development, because they have their crisis intervention work. And then a city official, which would include us, as well as council members. And so the idea is to just make sure that the scene is safe, that the fire chief and our first responders can actually concentrate on what they need to concentrate on, and not have extraneous folks that are in the way. In addition, one of the things that I noticed is that several types of companies show up to these scenes. They are trying to help, maybe they're trying to, you know, at least say that they can provide certain services. And they are just too close. They are just too close. I have had, and you've heard me tell the story before, where I was at the Keswick Fire, and I had one of my constituents literally crying in my arms, because she was finally able to get out of her house with the dog and her husband, and was completely traumatized. And someone came up to her, tapped her on the shoulder, and shoved a piece of paper and a business card in her, you know, where I'm trying to console her, to say that they could, you know, help with boarding up, or whatever it was. And I say, you know, I said to the person, "Get out. You just hold on a minute, get out." And that kind of really aggressive solicitation should not occur when people are traumatized just as they're getting out of their house. Or, you know, they know a family member is still there, or something is happening. And so what this does is prevent that kind of thing from happening for, you know, any type of, anybody who comes into the scene. And I know that it would help. We've been working with the fire department on this bill, because, you know, they are responsible for keeping everybody safe within that scene. And this would make it a lot easier to make sure that, you know, they've got everybody safe, because they're pulling people to a different part of the scene. Now, we know that, I based this on the, you know, the solicitation. But I also have had constituents who have signed on the papers when they've been pressured, because they're in the middle of a trauma, and have been taken advantage of. They've run out of insurance money, or they tried to stop a contract, and they weren't able to. And so, one of the things that we want to do, and I'm working with Delegate Ampry on, is, you know, dealing with, you know, this insurance piece of it, which we, as a city council, have no authority to do. But at least this fire scene will allow for the family to have a little bit of time to get the information that they need, to call their insurance company, to try to, you know, gather their thoughts before being pressured to sign anything. And that's what we're doing here. So we're not saying that they can't contact, these companies can't contact residents, they just can't be inside that tape while the first responders are there. And that's all that this bill does. And, Mr. Chair, I'm grateful for the opportunity to work with the committee on this. Delegate Ampry is online. He has got a busy schedule, so he wasn't able to come in. But I would appreciate your indulgence in having him be able to talk a little bit about what we're working on together. And he's been at some of the fire scenes with me, because he is, as all of you know, we've had a lot of fires in my district. He represents the same area. So, thank you, committee members, for the opportunity. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I understand we have Delegate Ampry joining us virtually, Representative of the 40th District. Delegate Ampry, can you hear us? Are you able to speak up?
Yeah, I can hear you all, making sure, can you all hear me?
Wonderful, love to hear from you.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you so much for permitting me to speak in this way. Unfortunately, you all know how this life is. I have three places to be at once this afternoon, so I'm trying to be as productive as I can. Mr. Chair, members of the committee and members of the chamber, I just wanna say that this bill is really important. And I want to really commend the councilwoman for offering this legislation, 25-0018. And I am in full support of it, because we need to have better regulations at these disaster sites. Just a couple of years ago, there was a horrendous fire right behind my house. Literally woke up at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning with screams, ran outside, four houses were ablaze. And I was making sure that my neighbors were safe, making sure everyone got out of their houses, making sure people had places to go, making sure those who were utterly got their medicine, etc. And in that process, as I'm walking around, I see the people that the councilwoman has already mentioned. People are walking around trying to solicit their services to people. And in these moments of tragedy, in these moments of trauma, this should be a safe space where people are, where our first responders are focused on people safe, and making sure that they are able to make sure that the perimeter and the actual structures are safe without having to deal with individuals that are not members of those who live there, or that are part of the additional emergency personnel. So I think this bill is necessary. I've seen it firsthand. And I think, you know, the work that we've been doing in Annapolis, offered a bill, House Bill 1348, which would have put in some similar restrictions. But one of the other things that the bill would have done, unfortunately, we just ran out of time. You all know how busy this session was. Literally ran to the last minute on trying to get this bill through. Another thing that the bill would do is it would permit a five-day rescission period, where after you sign a contract of that type, where you're trying to do remediation services, you have five days for to send that contract. What we know is happening is that when you are in a trauma-filled environment, you just, you just lost your house. You just saved your cat, you just saved your family. You've got those, those only rare heirlooms that you had. You go out the house, and you're, you know, you're stressed, you're sad. You're dealing with the trauma. It's a tough spot to be in to read, you know, a 10- or 8-page contract in order to determine what kind of services that you're gonna need to fix your house. So it's important that people have that time period to rescind that contract. And that's what we're working on in Annapolis. We hope to have that done next year. But in the meantime, it's really important that no one should be signing contracts in the moment of peril. And unfortunately, we've seen actual individuals who deliver these type of services, literally trying to get people to sign contracts while they're on their way to an ambulance, while they're in the ambulance, right? So these are the kind of things where we want to make sure that people have, these perimeters are set, where people have the dignity and respect they deserve when they're going through their trauma. And to make sure that our emergency personnel, our first responders, have the space and liberty to make sure that everyone that is in that designated area is safe, and if they're able to clear those areas in a safe and manner. So, again, I'm really appreciative of the councilwoman's work on this matter. She has been in the trenches on this. And every, unfortunately, we've had some serious fire tragedies over the past few years, and in the neighborhood, and in the district. And she's been there every moment, seeing it through firsthand. So I really commend her for her efforts. And it's important that we get legislation like this through to make sure that we're protecting our residents from bad actors, and ensuring that whenever they're dealing with these serious moments of trauma, that they have some peace and sanctity as they work through that. So with that said, I urge a favorable report in this bill. And I really hope that the council can get this moving. And I think that Baltimore can be a guiding light to the rest of the state as well, on how we can ensure that those who are dealing with tragedy have the safety and the dignity they deserve. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Delegate Ampry. And I appreciate both your leadership on this issue. I'll open the floor if there are any initial questions for the sponsor. Wonderful. All right, seeing no questions, we'll go to agency reports, starting first with the Law Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michelle Toth, on behalf of the Law Department. And we can approve for form and legal sufficiency.
Excellent, thank you. Next up, we've got the Police Department.
Karen Ashburn, on behalf of the Baltimore City Police Department. And we are in support of the bill.
Excellent. Next up, we've got the Fire Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Members of the Committee, Chief James Wallace, on behalf of the Baltimore City Fire Department. I believe there were amendments. Were there amendments? Okay, yeah, we support.
Next up, we have Finance.
Gabriel Stuart-Sykowitz, on behalf of the Finance Department. We support the bill with amendments.
Wonderful. And then I understand the administration has some amendments that they'd like to speak to. I'll offer up to you. We can go to DHCD first. Let's do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jason Wright, representing DHCD. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Excellent, thank you. And I want to welcome Councilwoman McCray to the meeting. All right, any questions from the committee? Oh, sure, go ahead, Mr. Wright, Chair.
My apologies. I have a, I just wanted to hear from Chief Wallace directly, obviously, the fire department's. A sense of why this is important is, I think, incredibly important, my decision of how I assess this. So I would love to hear a little more, of an explanation for you of what you think about this bill and the impact of the bill.
So, thank you for the question, Councilman. Again, Chief Wallace, on behalf of the Fire Department. The Fire Department really has three main points we have to address on any incident. It's life, safety, property, preservation of the environment. As such, our incident commanders have a huge responsibility to maintain control over that incident footprint. Whether that footprint is the size of the Key Bridge Incident, it's a square block on Fulton Avenue, or it's one house on Light Street, we bear those same responsibilities to maintain, or to, obviously, to save life, to attempt to suppress the incident and control anything that may further infect the environment. The challenges that we have are often accountability. We send a force of people to an incident based on the incident type, and we have to maintain accountability over all of those individuals. Furthermore, the incident commander has legal responsibility for anyone who steps foot on that incident scene, be it a councilperson, be it the mayor, be it a civilian, be it anybody. They ultimately are accountable for the safety of those individuals as they step onto an incident scene. So the way we attempt to keep this under control, maintain accountability and safety at the same time, is we will set some type of a control zone, some type of a perimeter. We use yellow tape, just like the police do, around a crime scene. The expectation is that with the inside of that perimeter, we maintain the safety of not only our personnel, but anyone we choose to allow in there, whether, you know, for business reasons, or, you know, the family. In industry, oftentimes, we'll have chemical experts stay with us inside of an area, because they know the facility the best. So these are just examples. But we ultimately maintain responsibility for control of that scene. The challenge is, is when we have people move in and out. We are not the police. We can't physically remove someone. We can order them to leave, but that's about the extent of what we can do. So, you know, I'll kind of wind it down by saying, we've got to maintain control of that footprint with some type of a visual indicator that delineates that. But it's very difficult for us. When the battalion chief or the deputy, in some cases, the assistant chief is running a fire ground, they're focused right on that incident. So we need to have that control area around us. Honestly, it's got to be respected. It should not be any different. A fire ground should not be any different than a police shooting scene. There are reasons why tape is put up. There are reasons why people are asked to leave the area, primarily for their safety. But, you know, we have to, again, maintain that accountability. The final piece I would say is this. The Fire Department is responsible for this legally, and ultimately, as an agency of the city. There's a lot of responsibility that comes with trying to control an incident scene. We do the best we can, but oftentimes, we, you know, we find that there are barriers to that.
Thank you, Chief. I actually want to follow up with that question, if it's okay. You mentioned instances where you'll have experts that can help advise you on how to handle an emergency situations, like chemical experts. I was quickly looking through the list of authorized folks here. And in an instance like that, that doesn't necessarily call someone like that out, is that something that we should maybe consider? And, you know, experts as deemed...
We often phrase them as SMEs, subject matter experts. There is an advantage to, you know, an amendment there. I will tell you, in any fixed facility incident, even a tanker that would roll over out on 95 that had something other than, like, a petroleum product, right? Something that was much more extreme or toxic. We've got to have those industry experts with us to help advise us. So I would agree that that should be considered.
That makes sense. Councilwoman Porter.
I did, I had a question. Chief Wallace, talk to me about, whenever I go into a scene, there is a specific criteria and evaluation that you all use in order to kind of assess the scene, assess persons kind of coming onto the scene? Can you talk more about that?
So, I guess, could you be a little more specific? My apologies.
Sure, so, yeah, no worries. So, from my understanding, when there is a fire, there is a certain amount of time that an incident commander comes on the scene. They hold the scene for an hour. There are specific criteria where, in which, they bring other people onto the scene. Can you talk more about how you all assess whether and how additional people come onto the scene? I know you just mentioned the yellow tape, but there is a, I know that there is, knowing you and knowing your department, I know that there is a specific protocol that needs to happen in order for that to happen.
So, I think if we were to bring additional walk-ons onto an incident scene, it would be specific to the incident itself. So, let's take an imminent structural collapse. We will almost always call for a building inspector to come out and assess, where is this going? Where are we gonna be an hour from now, two, three, four hours? So that would be a case where we would ask them to walk on.
So, one of the reasons why I asked that question, I know one of the amendments that I shared with the bill sponsor was making sure to communicate that time, place, and manner aspect, when these certain people are allowed on the scene, and how many, whether their intensity, whether they are directly germane to that particular incident, whether they are community people. Like, have you all developed that type of connection yet? Or evaluation criteria? And that can be either for you or Tyler, or I know you are.
I think, if I may, and for the record, Tyler Schinella, Deputy Director for Local Affairs and Mayor's Office of Government Relations. We don't want to be too prescriptive here, right? Like, if we have the Fire Department responding to an emergency, want to allow the chief, incident commander, whoever is on the scene, to have as much flexibility as possible to control that scene as they see fit, and to separately allow the folks that they think need to be there to assist our first responders in ultimately getting that fire down, but then separately making sure that the public safety hazard, even after the fire is put out, is addressed. So I think that is my concern here, is to not look at this bill as we're literally gonna list and lay out everything that has to happen at a fire scene, because we know that fires are dynamic. We've seen a fire start at one house and spread to six others, right? And so, that's just my flag for the committee. And the language says "may." So this isn't like a "shall," where it's like, this is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, who should be on this scene? This is just an example, the way I'm reading it with the "may," of some of the folks that would be at a fire scene.
And Deputy Director, thank you for that explanation. And I totally agree with you. This is more, this is more from an administrative procedure perspective, not something that is within the official language of the legislation. So I totally agree with you with that. What I am getting at is, with that administrative procedure aspect, you will be able to have a tiered approach to persons that would come in, and then that would also provide a time, place, and manner perspective for any type of industry that would like to come in, that, you know, could engage with the family. And it also provides them with the time that they can actually be there. So they're not showing up on the scene directly when it happens. They are already aware of the time that it could take for something like that to happen in order for them to be invited to the scene.
Yeah, and I, maybe I need to clarify, you know, the point I made. With regard to SMEs or bringing people onto the scene, it's for the sole purpose of mitigating the incident itself, right? Stopping that incident from evolving further. You know, the, what I'll call the backend consultations and things like that, there's nothing to stop it from occurring. But there is something to stop it from occurring with inside the exclusion zone, where inside of that yellow tape. I don't see it any different than when neighborhood stabilization services may be deployed right away on a large incident, right? Yet, BPD's still holding a crime scene. You know, that's kind of going on down the street, down the block. You know, that's, that has no effect on us. We have to make sure that we keep that incident footprint as isolated as possible. And that's our mission, is to mitigate that as fast as possible, attempt to mitigate it and keep it as safe as possible. We're trying to focus on what I'll, we call it a footprint, right? But it's a very compressed area that we're trying to work in, you know, without the distractions.
And Chief, you actually hit the nail right on the head, exactly where I was going. The Mayor's Office of Neighborhoods and Safety and Engagement, they have a stabilization plan that is formulated by a time, place, and manner perspective. And so, in order for us to communicate, not only to our offices, to residents, to community, having some sort of, having some sort of rubric that people can follow. I know, you know, the mission is to contain the fire as soon as possible, as immediate as possible. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about when Red Cross comes to the scene. I'm talking about other community-based organizations that want to help. I'm talking about industry that comes to the scene. So that's something that I really think should be developed, or at least provided a consideration on. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gray.
Thank you, Chair. This is for the Fire Department. How will the department document and report incidents involving noncompliance in enforcement of this ordinance? Or do you guys have something that you, a framework in place right now? And I'll, second part, I'll ask the second part to that.
So, if, how would we document? If we had fire line tape up and somebody came inside of it, and we had to deal with that, or? I mean, if it's documented at all, if it was, it would be inside of our, what we call, fire records. So there's actually a fire report that has a narrative section in there. If there was an unfavorable interaction, maybe it led to involvement with law enforcement or something like that, then it's very likely the incident commander would just add that into their records. But I don't think there's a, there's a lot of dropdowns in fire records. I don't think there's a prescribed area, per se, for that sole purpose.
Okay, and I ask this, in the event that, I'm thinking about either companies that we don't really want there at that moment, if they just bypass it and try to sneak in, will there be BPD enforcement? Like, how does that be, how's that reported? But also, thinking about a family member who honestly, they won't care what type of tape is up. If, you know, if it's my grandmother or someone in my family, I want to get there. Just figure out how you're gonna document it, and then what type of penalties are involved, based on whether it's a family member or whether it's a restoration company or whatever.
Was the last part, what type of penalties? Is that what you...
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so I'll actually start with the last one first. I don't know what the criminal penalties are for that. I don't know, or civil penalties. What I can tell you is, again, if we get someone into that area, we're gonna, we're gonna ask them, or quite frankly, oftentimes, tell them. You know, you need to be back beyond the fire line tape if they choose not to. And they're either confrontational, or they're presenting a safety issue, then that's where we ask the police to step in.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the answer to my colleague's question is in the bill, if I may restate it. So, in the bill, at the last page, talks about the, you know, what Chief Wallace just said, was that they would escort whoever it is out. And then, there is the penalty of $500, or imprisonment of not more than 90 days. But those fines wouldn't be assessed unless the police have to get involved. So, yeah, and then the other piece about your question related to the family, a family member is allowed in the scene based on what I have here in the bill. But obviously, you know, the chief or the, you know, main officer would, you know, obviously, exercise safety discretion.
Yeah, I guess that's where I was getting at, trying to, you know, discern the family member, they are not. But also, I understand that's in the bill, the penalties, but real time, how's the penalty going? How will that penalty be assessed? How will it be given out? Like, you know, will there be, you know, BPD at the ready? No cause to, you know, be against this. I'm very much for this, but just some questions I have. And I have one more question. How frequently do unauthorized civilians interfere at emergency scenes? Like, historically or anecdotally? And can you provide examples of where this has caused harm or delay in your ability to do your work?
I don't know that I could characterize it with any degree of regularity. I mean, I can tell you, we had a fire Saturday night up off of Roland Avenue, and we had the homeowners come right to us and complain, that there were people there that were, you know, trying to sell service. They were not up in the front yard. They were not within what I would call a perimeter. We didn't take any action with that. It's, I don't go to all the fires, so I can't tell you with a degree of accuracy how often it happens. I have had to deal with it myself, where we've had to ask people to leave the immediate area. Generally, that happens. It doesn't always happen. Generally, it happens. And I think our incident commanders, irregardless of the circumstance or situation, irregardless of the circumstance or situation, if they feel as though they have someone that's inside of an area where they don't belong, they all know how to react to that. They all know to either order them out or ask for the police to do so. Family members will always add an added degree of sensitivity because they're at a time of loss, right? So that becomes a little more difficult. We try to deal with that in a little bit of a different manner, right? You've got to have that compassion for them at the time of the loss. But back to your original question, I can't give you a degree of frequency because I'm just not at all the fires. But I do have chiefs here, if, you know, if any of them want to testify, they could probably let you know that.
I think you answered enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further questions?
Another question. How soon after you guys have left the scene are those, any company or, you know, the folks that are trying to reach out to people saying, hey, we can restore your home, are they able to step onto the scene before you guys have cleared the area?
So, once we clear a scene, we no longer have control over it. There, you actually come to, you know, kind of a fork in the road with that. There's two ways that we can leave a scene. We leave the scene, it's turned back over as property, back to the homeowner, business owner themselves. The second way is if there's another agencies there that's functioning. So case in point, a fire on Keswick Road a while back, the fire department had kind of wound down its control of the incident scene. However, it became a criminal investigation because there were fire fatalities involved in that. So the ATF remained, as did BPD arson. And then after that, it transitioned over to an HCD operation because there were structures there that were unsafe, and there were a couple of those that were in danger of imminent collapse. So it's one of two ways. Either we'll leave, there's no assumption of further issues with that, and the property owner will resume control, or it transitions through other city or federal agency control.
Okay, I just wanted clarification, just to, you know, make it, I guess, on the record, that this bill doesn't inhibit someone's ability to restore. It's basically, if you're the first at a scene, you just don't have, you're not the first person to get to speak to the family. So I guess at this point, if everyone's just standing around the perimeter, I guess hypothetically, you can answer this if you would like, but everyone will stand around the scene. And then at that point, once it's clear, people would just go up to the family if they would like, or the family could come over to someone. But this doesn't really inhibit their ability to start the restoration based on when they talk to the family, in a sense, because they technically can't go onto the scene until you guys cleared, correct?
As long as we hold an incident scene, we control who walks on and off that scene. And any of those backend processes are not part of our operation. They're not part of our focus. Again, we maintain control for the purpose of life, safety, property, and environmental preservation. That's what we are there for. Everything else that goes on after we leave, once we leave, again, we've returned that property to its rightful owner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further questions? Seeing no further questions, we will open up to public testimony.
Mr. Chair, I thought the administration was going to go over the amendments real quick?
Sure, we'll go over the amendments. Tyler, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, these are just short and sweet. The First Amendment occurs on page two and line 13, and it, I would say it's a technical amendment, but it says caution tape, which is like a specific type of barricade type tape. So the amendment we put in just says barricade tape, just as a coverall, in case it is like police tape or caution tape or tape that says something else. Moving down to line 17, we add there, unless the fire chief makes a determination that a public safety hazard remains, which that whole line is after the fire department completes the investigation of the emergency scene, remove any boundaries marking the emergency scene, unless the chief makes a determination that a public safety hazard remains, which as you just heard the chief say, sometimes as the scene rolls off from the fire department, DHCD may pick it up, or it may become a police matter. And, you know, so just making sure that there is still a level of discretion there in case a public safety hazard remains for some of those barriers to be up and present for folks to be aware of that.
To that effect, and I don't have the language in front of me right now, but when you refer to the chief, do you mean the chief proper or?
Well, yeah, because the definition in the bill is the chief or the chief's designee.
Got it. Okay, great.
And then next, on page three, lines seven and eight, we strike, only because, and we strike it and replace it with personnel from the Baltimore City Fire Department. It specifically lists out a firefighter or emergency medical services personnel. They both will be personnel from the fire department. So we just clean the language up there. And then in line 12, we strike personnel from the American Red Cross. Just in keeping with kind of the list that is here, is the pretty much folks that are going to be city officials, fire department, police department, with the exception of like a victim of a fire or their family. We don't list any other external partners here and don't want this, folks to look at this and read as where they're only recognizing the Red Cross. So I'm not going to come and offer any other services at that scene. So that's the amendment there. And that's it.
Okay. Any questions about the proposed amendments? Councilman Porter?
Mr. Chair, just wanted to have a, be very transparent with the committee around the issue of the Red Cross. We, I've been looking at the suggestion of my colleague from the 10th, looking at whether or not we can have sort of a broad definition of those types of volunteer groups put in. So it may be like another group beside the Red Cross or something like that. So I just wanted to make the committee aware that we're thinking that through a little bit, so that, and it has, the definitions that I've found so far that are used in other places are that they're voluntary organizations and volunteers that are the ones coming out, which is the case for Red Cross. So just to make the committee aware that that is something that I'm looking into.
Thank you. That helps a lot. Councilman Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That was it. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions about the proposed amendments? Hearing and seeing none, we will move on to public testimony. For those that sign up in the back, we'll call you forward. And we will afford each person two minutes to testify. Please be respectful of the committee. Please try to honor your two minutes. I'll give you some time, a little bit of time to finish up your testimony after that two minutes. If it persists beyond that, we will recess until you stand down. So we don't want to be put in that situation. I want to be respectful to everyone's time here. With that, we have the list here. If you would like to sign up, I believe the sheet is, there's another sheet still back there?
No, sir.
What we'll do is, after we get through this list, we will open up the testimony for folks to just step right up. First up, we have William Hoffman. Please press the button on the right-hand side. Press the button on the right-hand side, and the mic should turn red.
On the microphone?
On the microphone. Yeah, you can tilt it down so we can hear you clearly.
Okay, other than that, I was going to ask for some phone books. Okay, first of all, okay. First of all, I'm here on behalf of Mr. Carabares and the service that he provided during my tenure with the Baltimore City Fire Department to the citizens. I'm a retired battalion chief. I served 40 years with the department, the last 16 being as a battalion chief, incident commander at many emergencies. I've been in charge of hundreds of fires, ranging from individual fires with just one room, commercial properties, fires involving multiple fatalities from northwest, east, south. Fire does not discriminate. It happens everywhere. I primarily want to focus on Mr. Carabares's activity during, primarily the main focus, or which occurs most of the fires, are these private dwellings. It's been my understanding, and I will reference a comment or two that Chief Wallace made, our three main focuses are life, safety, property conservation or preservation, and mitigating the circumstance. I will say that in my experience, there's a footprint that starts out, and as the situation expands, the footprint expands. Well, sometimes I've been on situations with one house, two houses, a whole block. As that expands, so does our resources. We bring in more people. We have a dedicated scene safety officer that assists the incident commander in dealing with primarily the footprint of the, what we would call the hot zone, the safety and welfare of the fire service personnel and anybody else that's there to enter inside to assist. Basically speaking, and I'm going to just go back real quickly, when I first came in the fire department, I worked with tenured chiefs.
Excuse me, if you could begin to close up your testimony.
Okay, all right. What I found basically, from my experiences, what's the occupants or the homeowners are over the shock of what has just happened? Their place of residence is destroyed. Primarily based on some neighborhoods that I've been in, we basically try to secure the building the best we can with boarding up the front door with the door that we broke down and plastic on the windows. And then we leave the scene, okay? Mr. Carabares, in the past, has been helpful to homeowners, where he's actually made it beneficial to us that once I was made aware through conversations with the owner that he was going to secure the building, then, believe it or not, our turnaround time with apparatus on the scene was cut tremendously because we no longer had to use the manpower to shovel the stuff, to put the plastic up that typically would blow away the next day during windy conditions. So knowing that he was securing it so that no unlawful entry could go back into the dwelling, that made our job so much easier and was able to get our units back in service to respond to the next fire. One of the worst things that I can tell you is
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
People going through your lifelong possessions on the front porch or on the front street. It's a terrible thing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Next up, we have William Carabares.
First, I'm going to start off with, sir, I'm going to need at least four minutes to read this. I mean, this is a long battle.
What you can do, take your two minutes.
I'll sign up for these bases.
And then what I would recommend you do is you can actually give that to committee, and we can take that into consideration. I just want to be fair to everyone across the board. It would be unfair if I just afforded each individual additional time.
I'll read till you stop me.
Okay.
And my time starts now?
Go for it.
Good morning, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is William Carabares. I am the owner and president of Platinum Emergency Services. A company that's proudly served Maryland families since, in Baltimore since 2002. Today, I firmly, in opposition to any effort by Baltimore City to block, restrict communications between emergency mitigation professionals and homeowners, whether yellow tape, solicitation bans, or delayed access rules. This issue is not about businesses trying to get ahead. This is about the homeowner. The family stands outside their home in shock, in the dark, not knowing where to turn or how to begin recovery. Last year alone, Platinum Emergency Services responded to 400 fires across Maryland, and over 60% of the homeowners that were helped were served after midnight, in the darkness, at night, when they needed immediate professional support. In those crucial early hours, immediate mitigation is the only thing that can prevent irreversible damage and financial loss. Restricting access through yellow tape does not protect the homeowner. It delays help, worsens property damage, and leaves families vulnerable to mold, structural failure, and theft. While groups like the Red Cross are permitted through the yellow tape, they often do not have the PPE, technical ability to provide structural hazardous, I'm sorry, proper, proper secure hazardous structures licensed and insured restoration companies have. On the other hand, we're fully equipped to make these environments safe and to begin recovery process immediately. The Constitution protects us under the First and Fourth Amendment. Article 40 of the Maryland Declaration of Rights and multiple court rulings across the county make it clear. Truful, lawful communication between professionals and citizens cannot be restricted, even during emergencies. This is not about protecting businesses. It's about protecting the rights and safety of Baltimore homeowners. In addition, recent interviews aired on local news outlets
Please begin to close up.
Have confirmed that what many of us feared, this bill is truly about, it's not truly about consumer protection. It's about government overreach targeting restoration companies and public adjusters, who are already regulated and licensed by the Maryland Insurance Administration. And my application's in. There's already a rule, eight to eight, we can't go out. Now you want to restrict us from working during the day? So when can we work? The consequences of these restrictions are real and dangerous. Homeowners are left unsecured and vulnerable. Mold and toxins are allowed to spread unchecked. Looters strike, and properties are abandoned. Insurance claims are denied because immediate action wasn't taken. Baltimore families deserve more. Emergency mitigation is not an option. It's essential. It's preserving their home, their health, and the hope after a disaster. I respectfully urge the council to reject these harmful restrictions and stand with the homeowners, not against them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carabares. Next up, oh, before we go to our next testimony, I want to acknowledge Councilman Glover, who's joined the meeting. Next up, we've got Chris Logsdon.
Thank you for your time. My name is Chris Logsdon. I'm an insurance adjuster, public adjuster. Been in business in Baltimore for over 25 years. We represent homeowners and first-party claims. Our job is to negotiate and get the homeowner the most amount of money. That starts from the time that the fire happens, when they engage in our services. The administration is already limiting our power of working between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Now, this bill would definitely hinder us even more. If this bill passes, it does nothing but help the insurance company because it allows them to force their vendors and to dictate to the homeowner their, what they want the homeowner to actually see and what their rights are not being taken care of in the policy. This bill would also limit the mitigation companies, which Mr. Carabares has mentioned about how strong and important it is to mitigate it from further damage. I can't begin to tell you how many times the houses get broken into when they're not secured over and over after they've had a fire. So not only is the mitigation, if it's not taken care of, we get calls back for people who actually need to have it secured again. So in closing, we definitely oppose this bill. We feel like it's not helping the consumer. It's hindering the consumer because they're not going to know their rights, and all it's going to do is not give the homeowner a level playing field. And it just helped the insurance company throughout the process. Thank you.
Councilman Porter actually had
Mr. Chair, it's okay if not. I'll follow up after. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next up, we have Frank Boston.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. I'm Frank Boston III. I'm here on behalf of Platinum Services and Mr. William Carabares. Before, can we pause my time for one second? It's worth it. Not part of my testimony, but I just have to do it. Mr. Carabares's son, who is here and will be testifying, I think this group should know that from Baltimore, we have the two-time world champion indoor skydiver amongst us. Just got back from Belgium. He's the world champion indoor stand-up. Not the national champion, the world champion, two years in a row, which is, wow, I wish I was a world champion at anything, maybe even popcorn or something. Okay. I have four points I want to make. We oppose this bill. Basically, the bill is not needed. The industry works fine. My clients and others provide a much-needed service at a crucial time. There may be isolated cases where someone acted too aggressively or seemingly without passion, but this is not passion, but this is not the norm. And as the good chief right here stated, the fire department already knows how to deal with this situation and quote, as he just said, they maintain control. The bill really is, is not needed. Second point, emergency repair workers have to get to the scene quickly to mitigate the damage, to mitigate the damages. This protects the homeowners because they have a duty to mitigate damages because of their insurance companies. And I have copies of two policies, but I'll just read you the provisions because I only have two minutes. But it says they, um, stay firm. Must protect the property from further damage or loss and also make reasonable and necessary temporary repairs required to protect the property. Same provisions in Nationwide's policy. Duties after a loss, I can share these with you. Protect the property from further damages. If repairs to the properties are required, you must make reasonable and necessary repairs to the property immediately. So it's, it's, it's a needed service. They have to get there per their insurance company, otherwise the insurance companies will not cover. If this bill moves forward, I, then I should, I suggest an amendment that any city official that goes beyond that tape cannot make any referrals to homeowners for emergency repair services. It's a fairness and equal competition issue. So if you're going behind that tape, you can't be handing out cards to someone that you have a relationship with. That should be an amendment, that should be prohibited. On the bill, um, you know, it was already mentioned that there was a state bill, the state bill failed and the reason why it failed, it got out the house-
If you could begin to close your testimony.
Yep. Um, it, the Senate needed more time to deal with it. The one thing I wanted to point out to the group were a couple of issues I had with the bill and I'll do this in two seconds. Um, it says, "An authorized person means a person who is given permission." But, and I like this provision, but who gives the permission? It's not clear in the bill. Who has the authority to give the permission? Someone already mentioned that, you know, Red Cross should be stricken, what makes them different from any other external person. And the last thing I wanted, point I want to make is, it says, "A person may not loiter." I think that's too strong. Our people do not loiter. They are there to give help. And the last final thing is jail time? Really? This bill shouldn't have any jail time because our people are there to help the person. Yeah, and so I think we would need to take a good look at that provision. With that, we stand for any questions.
Thank you.
I have more to say, but two minutes is not enough.
Um, or, or a question for the sponsor?
We can ask questions of the sponsors. We can ask questions of the agencies. We typically don't allow questions of folks testifying.
Yeah, or I'll just address my question to the chair. I think, Mr. Chair, what I'm trying to, I think what, from what I've heard from the folks that have testified already is, I think this bill is saying during the fire, like while there's an active fire, folks cannot be within the perimeter. And I just would like to have an understanding of, is the request from the folks that have testified, Mr. Chair, is it, is it that they want that access during the fire? Or are they saying after the fire? Because after the fire, and, and I want to be very clear that I'm, this is not me speaking on behalf of the administration saying that we support or not this bill. What I just wanted is some clarity here to kind of understand. And then are there other jurisdictions where they can just come to a active fire scene and speak to homeowners?
So I, and I just reached back and checked with my client.
You're welcome to answer.
We believe each situation, to, to answer the question, each situation obviously is different, uh, but in some cases, we believe during the fire. And again, as it works today, the fire department, the chief controls that scene. They, they can tell our people, hey, not right now. But they can also say, okay, go stand over here, you know, 50 yards and you can go ahead and talk to whoever you need to talk to, but you can't be here. They control the scene, they maintain, they maintain control. And as the chief testified, there are situations where even during the fire or immediately after, that plastic that the fire department puts up is not enough to keep the real loiterers from out of there. That, that, those decisions to board up the property need to be made immediately because calls need to be made.
Mr. Chair.
It depends on the situation, is the answer.
So hold on, I, I want to, I want to clarify, um, because I think I have these questions as well. In my mind, uh, while the fire is happening, the fire department is busy focusing on the fire and obviously would not benefit by having someone trying to board up a door.
Right.
Um, that just makes no sense. Uh, and conceivably after the fire department has put out the fire and is now leaving the scene, taking down said tape, um, folks can do whatever they need to do. And I would imagine that that's not much of an issue.
Right.
Um, and so I, I asked this question of, of the chief. When we're looking at these situations, um, when do we have a problem? Is, is the problem after the fire or during the breakdown or during the fire? Because I'm, I'm thinking this is like during the fire, you guys are in the heat of it, no pun intended. And you're trying to focus on the fire, focus on the family, save lives, save property. The last thing you want to worry about is bumping into some guy.
So, so I would first say that, that the term during the fire is very subjective. I think while the incident's active is probably more appropriate. While we are still there, we are in some way, shape, or form still engaged in something. Whether we're, we're waiting on, after a fire and we're waiting on BG&E, um, we're, you know, waiting on HCD to get there. The incident scene is still active. When we maintain presence, we maintain responsibility. So I don't want us to focus on during a fire, right? The, again, once, once we depart the scene and turn that scene over either to an allied agency or back to the, the responsible party or homeowner, we have now left the incident scene. We have no control over what happens behind us, what, what's happening in the rearview mirror. We've left the incident scene now. So, um, we, we are no longer in charge of that scene. Does that, does that address your question?
I think it does, and maybe this will help clarify it. Um, when, when you're still on the scene, it's to ensure that the scene is safe. Would that be safe to say? Like, you're not going to hang around after you've declared the scene's safe? Or would you, is, are there instances in which you've, um, put out the fire? Maybe, um, for instance, if BG&E was a factor in this and you wanted to make sure that, you know, the, the fire could not theoretically restart because of, um, access to wires, who knows? So you want to make sure you secure the scene properly before you open it up to the public or else folks could be walking into a potentially dangerous situation. That makes sense to me. But, but at what point would you theoretically say folks can go in and, you know, is safety the factor that determines that or is there some other factor that we should be keeping in?
Well, safety's always going to remain the primary factor. Again, it, if, if, if you look, you know, if, if we stick to just, um, residential structure fires in the, in the city, a majority of those are row homes, right? We know the age of the row homes is always a factor with us. They don't always, uh, the end result of those fires doesn't always occur while we're fighting fire. Those, they, there could be collapses, it could be partials. Naturally, in, in the case, again, I'll go back to BG&E, we will shut the electric off at the box, we'll turn the gas off at the valve, both, we can localize the house, but the service still remains. So that's always a concern. You know, once the incident commander deems an incident itself safe, then things can loosen up a little bit. But, um, I would suggest that although that may happen, ultimately, as we remain present on an incident scene, we do still maintain A, control of the scene, and B, ultimate responsibility for what happens.
Um, I'm going to turn over to a sponsor. I believe she had a clarifying question as well.
Yeah, um, I do have more people that are here to testify, so I would imagine you're still going to go through the-
We're, we're still going to go through testimony. I think we want to clarify-
Yeah, no, I just, uh, wanted to clarify that the intent of this bill is, is during when the fire department and any other response agency is there. That means that, um, the insurance companies or whoever else just have to wait that amount of time. It could be an hour, it could be all day, but that's it. I mean, and it doesn't prevent them from calling or emailing or whatever. So the issue here is, is to, to make sure that that scene, that people are not being solicited while they're just coming out of a traumatic situation and that they're trying to get themselves together before they make some decisions. Um, and I have testimony here that I'm going to read, um, when the chair allows, uh, to, to that effect, but I think that, um, that's the, and also just, just to answer, ask my question, it's my understanding that this eight-to-eight thing is only for adjusters. It is not for the contractors. That is a state law that was put in place that is just for the adjusters. It is not for the contractors.
Yeah, that was the 2024 legislation you were speaking-
Correct. That's why, you know, I get that the strategy is confusion here, so I wanted to make very clear.
Address me.
Um, sorry, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just wanted to make very clear what we were talking about.
Uh, thank you, and I'm going to turn over to Councilman Gray before we go back to testimony. Councilman Gray.
Yep, just once again, Alex, I feel like we're running around the hems to where with this. So I'll, I guess I'll ask to anyone here, um, when there's a fire, when the area is being secured and no one, uh, has the ability to, to, to come on the scene, um, the, the mitigators can't step onto the scene to do anything, is board a door, clean up anything until you guys have said the scene is clear, correct?
Yeah, this, this scene needs to be released.
Yes. Sorry, release.
Yes, sir.
All right, and so they can't step foot onto the scene until it's released. So to me, it does not sound like this stops anything except for a face-to-face negotiation. Are you able to answer that question?
Uh, between-
As far as the mitigator, uh, the mitigator is going to have to stay on the scene for three, four, five, six hours after agreement is made. They have to wait until you release the scene, correct?
To be inside of an exclusion zone, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure because it sounds like it doesn't change anything. They would still have to wait. It's just your ability to negotiate with said party. And it sounds like you just want to be first on the scene, which, that's amazing, great, but this does not stop you guys from being first on the scene. It's just your ability to be first to talk to the person. Um, and I think my colleague's Bill is saying, um, you don't have the right, when something traumatic is happening, to just be the first on the scene to say something. I understand that you guys have a business, um, but people have just lost their lives. People have just lost everything and the last thing they want to do is talk about the recovery when they're still experiencing everything that's happening in the present. So I just wanted to make sure we clarified that. Thank you.
Thank you. We will go back into testimony. I've got quite a few people still lined up here. Uh, I've got Landon, Landon Caraberes. You've got two minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Landon Caraberes and I am the owner and president of Caraberes Restoration, a company dedicated to helping families and businesses recover safely and quickly after disasters. Today, I respectfully stand in opposition to the proposed city restrictions that would limit access to properties through yellow tape, solicitation bans, or access rules. While I understand the importance of maintaining order after emergency, these measures will cause more harm than good, putting the safety of our residents, their homes, and entire neighborhoods at serious risk. When a disaster strikes, time is crucial. Restoration companies like mine bring licensed, insured, and trained professionals directly to the scene to prevent immediate threats such as structural collapse, water intrusion, fire damage, and mold growth. Without fast mitigation, the damage to homes becomes irreversible. Insurance claims are jeopardized and families are displaced longer than necessary. Unfortunately, while organizations like the Red Cross are allowed access to the yellow tape proposed under this bill, they often do not have the necessary personal protective equipment or the technical skills required to stabilize dangerous conditions. They serve as an important humanitarian role, but they are not equipped to handle active hazards like compromised structures, electrical risks, or contaminated environments. Restoration companies, however, are, and we carry the proper certifications under the II CRC S500. By blocking licensed mitigation companies from entering through the yellow tape, Baltimore risks not only longer recovery times, but increased public health threats such as looting and unsafe neighborhood conditions. Delaying the first line of professional response makes the entire community more vulnerable, not safer. In reality, these restrictions do not stop unlicensed or bad actors. They only prevent the companies that are vetted, trained, and ready to help, and ready to help doing their jobs. They create a false sense of security while leaving properties exposed and residents without the immediate protection they need. Emergency mitigation is not an option. It is essential to community resilience. Baltimore families deserve better than yellow tape delaying critical help. I urge the council to reconsider these restrictions. Let's work together to create a solution that both safeguard public order and prioritize the real safety and well-being of our homeowners and neighborhoods. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have Jeffrey Gold.
I also want to thank you for the opportunity to testify on 25/0018. I'm a public adjuster, been a public adjuster in Baltimore since the mid-1980s. Much of my testimony has already been said, so I'm going to try to skip through it so you don't have to hear, hear it over and over again. What I would like to do is offer possibly a creative suggestion or compromise. When I started in the mid-'80s, up until about 2000, we used to have a fire line pass. We had to apply to the fire department of Baltimore City and Baltimore County. You can see how young I look. And we would be given permission to get one of these passes, and that would allow us to be on the fire ground. It would also allow the city the opportunity to know who we are and to also revoke our privileges if we cross the line. Cross the line would be interfere with the fire department, not obey an order from the fire police department, or go, you know, go into an ambulance to try to solicit somebody. I think we all here agree that that all would be inappropriate. But I do believe we have, we offer a valuable service and time is of the essence. Many people have previous problems with their insurance company, they don't trust their insurance company. A lot of people really are happy when we show up and we offer assistance and we offer advice. And I know that some of the people here have given free boardups to people that weren't insured. I know I personally have spent many, many hours on, with people that were underinsured or didn't have the right insurance and could not become clients of mine, but I've spent hours with them, telling them what to do and giving them advice. And I do believe we serve a perfect and, and time is of the essence. I would like you not to penalize the, the legal business owners in Baltimore City and the fire victims that can benefit, um, our services. If there are a few bad actors, we absolutely want them to be penalized to the fullest extent of the law. Uh, just to comment on what some people said before me-
If you could conclude.
Can I have 10 seconds?
10 seconds.
I think there should be a definition of, in the bill of what, that everyone understands so we know when we can cross that tape. Is it when water is no longer being put on the fire? Is it when the fire department declares it's under control, although I don't know how the average citizen would know when that is? But there should be some, something specific so we know because we don't want to violate the fire, we don't want to interfere with the fire department, but we also want to do our jobs. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, next up, we have John Bostwick.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is John Bostwick. I'm the owner of ServiceMaster of Baltimore, a Baltimore restoration company. We've been in business since 1981. To you, sir, I think that the homeowner's first thing that they want to discuss is recovery. Everybody has said everything that I wanted to say, so just me repeating it is going to bore you all very much. But I vehemently oppose this bill for many reasons. The bill adversely affects the rights of citizens that choose the vendor they feel most comfortable with during their time of need. I have submitted a letter from a policyholder that we're dealing with right now, somebody who we're doing a job for right now, uh, and it's one of the most beautiful, eloquently-written letters I've ever read in my life, and it catches the, captures the essence of what we do at ServiceMaster of Baltimore. Uh, again, we are one of the only people in here, I think, that actually are incorporated- Again, we are one of the only people in here, I think, that actually are incorporated in the city of Baltimore. We pay property tax, we have a diverse workforce, and this bill will hurt my business and hurt the people that I employ. And so I implore you not to look favorably upon this bill. Also, the insurance companies have specific language in their policies mandating that the policyholder take immediate steps to mitigate the damage in their home and secure the property from further damage. This part is, it's a contract. This part of the insurance contract allows the carrier to deny portions of the claim if this provision is not strictly adhered to. Moreover, without immediate boarding of windows and doors and tarpings of roofs, the property becomes vulnerable to looting and subject to liability exposure, which are all separate claims and separate occurrences, subject to separate deductibles, which is going to raise all of our insurance rates, including yours. So please look unfavorably on this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bostwick. Next up, we have Neil Khan.
Hi, my name's Neil Khan. I'm with Goodman Gable Gould. We're public adjusters. We've been in Maryland since 1941. I have not. We are semi-infavorable, favorable to this bill, and the reason is very, very general. And that is, if there's regulation of what's going on in the entire world of claims and the world of fires, it's only good and it helps the good actors, and it restricts the bad actors. We were very disappointed that a lot of what we talk about today could have been solved with the Maryland bill that did not go through. That's for another day. But sitting here, listening for the last hour and a half or so, one thing that's been common is everything is about a homeowner. Everything's about the people there and the human tragedy. What has not been mentioned is commercial, commercial fires, which are often very common, especially in Baltimore City. And I would propose, I don't know the procedures for amendments or anything, that the bill be limited to who everybody here is talking about, they're concerned about, that be residential properties, residential homeowners. I'm sure Maryland law has, or Baltimore City law has definitions of all that. And the corporate and the commercial world is a completely different world. It's about a business. It's about profit, profit and revenue, and how do we get up and running and everything? And I don't think some restrictions are warranted in that setting. And I think that all of the testimony here, much of which very, very compelling, in fact, and I agree with a lot of it, really applies to residential. So 20 seconds is spare.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We got some time back from the other ones. All right, next up, we have Ari Plout.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I'm Ari Plout. I'm here on behalf of Platinum Emergency Services, although I'm here in the capacity to read on behalf of Matthew Koster, who's the city president of the firefighters' union. He was unable to make it today, so he sent the letter. I submitted it, but I'm going to also read it into the record. Good afternoon, Honorable President and members of City Council. My name is Matthew Koster, and I'm the proud president of Baltimore Firefighters.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I need to object to this because, you know, the union and the Fire Department and the firefighters should be speaking for themselves here and not have a proxy that doesn't represent them. So I would respectfully...
I agree with you. What we can do, if you can have them send us a testimony, which I believe you said we already have.
Yes.
I think we would probably accept it that way. I do agree, it seems sort of strange for you to speak on behalf of the union when they're not here.
Okay.
We do have a written testimony as well. I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ari. All right, I understand we have potentially some folks that may not have signed up. If you have not signed up, I'm going to give you an opportunity to rise now and come up to the podium.
Mr. Chair, Jeremy did sign up, but I don't know why it's not on the paper. It might be on a different list.
If someone is here and has not had an opportunity to testify and wishes to testify, please feel free to step up to the podium, and we'll give you your two minutes. Yes, please.
Hello, my name's Derek Buda. I'm a retired fire captain, 31 years in Baltimore City. During my time, I haven't seen any unfavorable things that occurred, but I have seen one positive and one I would like to talk about was Platinum Emergency Services around 2017, 2018 in Brooklyn, Maryland, on Jeffrey Street. There was a lady in the house. She was a special needs lady. She was by herself. She actually didn't even know someone was living up on her second floor. Her second floor burned, and she needed to be, she was getting displaced. She, after speaking with Will Carabas, she had no place to go, no family to speak to, no insurance. I didn't know what occurred that evening, but I ended up seeing him in a different capacity, and he had put her in a hotel room for a couple nights, and he boarded her house up and put plastic on it anyway. And I know that has occurred more than one time. You know, it's occurred several times, and that's what should stand out. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional folks who are here with us in person that'd like to testify? Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Olson. I'm not a business owner, not a lawyer. I'm not even that smart, okay? But I am a proud citizen of Baltimore for the past over 20 years, in the great community of Hampden. I don't have any papers to read or anything like that. I have memories and I have feelings, okay? And I have questions. So I will make this quick. My house burned down October 15th, 2024, okay? Again, I have memories. I wish I didn't have them, okay? I have a lot of them. Besides, you know, the smell, the wondering, what am I going to do? Is people all right and everything else? The one memory that sticks out that is pertinent to this bill, this conversation, right here right now, is this. I remember my wife and my elderly mother-in-law, okay? They were on the ground trying to get warm. Now, let me preface this by saying, I left my house in my underwear with my mother-in-law over my shoulder, okay? Now, my memory is, my family's trying to get warm, and I remember a gentleman hovering over my wife with a card in her face, okay? And I remember how disrespectful that felt to me and my family. My house wasn't even done burning. It was still on fire. Okay? And I have one more, one question. Councilwoman, was the fine proposed $500? Okay, my follow-up question is this, is when someone's making $5,000 to $10,000 a house, is that $500 really going to do anything? Because that's how much it costs. And let me ask the public adjusters and the insurance companies, don't you care that I use this service and then the next night my house got broken into and looted? Do you care about that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Generally, we don't allow questions, so I will leave it up to the councilwoman. But generally, we don't allow questions during testimony. You're able to tell us how you feel about the bill, and we'll take that into consideration as we determine where to go next. With that, I believe we do have someone joining us.
We have somebody online, and then I'd like to read something into the record, if that's okay, read a testimony into the record.
Sure. So we'll take the person who's joining us virtually. Andy, we're going to unmute you. If you can hear us, if you can join us, Andy will allow you to testify. All right, Andy may or may not be having issues. What I'll do is, Councilwoman, I'll allow you to
Okay.
Read the testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for indulging me on this. My constituent was not able to make it today, and I wanted to just make sure that this was very clear in the hearing, so I didn't want to just leave it for written. This is from my constituent, Kimberly Dawkins. My name is Kimberly Dawkins. I submitting this written testimony to share experiences, homeowner who was further traumatized by the actions of an emergency service company on the night of my home fire, February 17th, 2025. At approximately 11:00 PM, I checked my phone and saw several missed messages, starting around 10:45. All of these calls and messages were from representatives of an emergency service company informing me that my house was on fire. When I returned the call, I was told that they had been trying to reach me, and then, without cause or without pause or compassion, I heard someone on a three-way call who introduced himself as a supervisor offer his condolences for my loss. It was at that moment I was blindsided with the realization that my home had truly caught fire. When I arrived at the scene with my fiance around 11:30, fire crews were still present. The emergency service team approached us, introduced themselves, and immediately stated they were there on behalf of my insurance company. They knew the name of my insurance provider, they had my contact information, and they consistently reinforced that their services were coordinated through my insurer. In my shock and distress, this gave me a false sense of security and trust. They walked through the home with me, took inventory, offered to file a claim on my behalf, which, by the way, is illegal, and handed me documents to sign, telling me that they were simply authorizations to secure the property and begin mitigation and that I wouldn't have to pay anything out of pocket. In the chaos of the moment, I signed. And what I didn't know was that I was signing contracts for services I did not want and had yet, not yet consented to with full understanding. The next morning, my contractor explained the reality that this company was not, in fact, working on behalf of my insurance provider. From that moment forward, the situation escalated to a pattern of aggressive and manipulative behavior that caused unnecessary stress during an already traumatic time. Despite me canceling the contracts, they showed up the next day to begin mitigation work before the fire investigation was scheduled and was not completed, made repeated unsolicited phone calls attempting to pressure me to use their services and their own vendors, misled and intimidated my contractor, even accusing him of being involved in the fire without evidence or basis, lied to my insurance adjuster by falsely claiming I had named my contractor as the cause of the fire, shared my contact information with vendors I did not authorize, leading to ongoing harassment, claimed that someone from my insurance company inquired why mitigation hadn't started yet to provide contact information when I asked for verification. What I experienced was blatant example of manipulation, misinformation, and emotional exploitation at a time when I was vulnerable and trying to make sense of a devastating loss. These companies should be limited to essential safety and emergency measures only on the day of the incident. They should not be allowed to continue to contact, push services, or solicit business until at least 48 to 72 hours after the event, giving the victim time to process, grieve, and make informed decisions. Their role must be transparently communicated, and under no circumstances should they claim to represent or act on behalf of the insurance company unless that representation has been explicitly established and documented. Homeowners should never be pressured or misled into signing contracts in the wake of trauma. There must be policies in place to protect us from confusion, coercion, and from being further victimized. Thanks for your time and attention, and I hope my experience will help spark change that protects others in the future, and she supports my bill. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to read that testimony.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And I think that was pretty helpful. Excuse me, she's a council member, so she could have easily have said this very same thing in the beginning. She wanted to hold this until testimony because she thought it would be more meaningful during that time period, but she could have easily have taken the time during the beginning of the meeting, of trying to be fair. So with that, we have Andy. Andy, you're welcome to speak. You've got two minutes. All right, we can't hear you, Andy. We'll try again. Try now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. All right.
Okay. Andy Emrime, Thomasville Restoration, in support of the bill. I believe two things can be true at the same time. The homeowners that have had this traumatic experience can be given a proper time. We can honor the, you know, what the fire folks are going to do in terms of containing the scene, and we can wait until the scene is cleared to then go ahead and, as gentlemen had said prior testimony, you know, make sure those homeowners are getting the emergency services that they need and are required to do within their insurance policies. I think both can be true, and I think it's all about the approach and the intention and the way that, you know, you go about conducting business, I think is really, really important, and just honoring those barriers, honoring, you know, the situation and trauma they're going through. And then, yes, we believe that, you know, we should help those customers and homeowners protect their assets, you know, secure the property from further damage. You know, so we are in support of the bill, believe both things can be true at the same time, don't see any issue with it.
Thank you, Andy. Any further questions for the sponsor, any further thoughts? We're not going to vote on this bill today. It seems like we have a number of amendments already that we'd be in consideration, and we've discussed some additional ones before we go any further on this. I will say, if it's okay, it seems to me that there are two issues at hand here. That first being the security of the site as the Fire Department is operating, especially during the fire, but even after maybe the fire is out, and securing the location. I think that is a perfectly reasonable expectation that the Fire Department could say that beyond these boundaries, no one should be there unless they are authorized. I think there's a much larger question. I think my time has run out. I think there's a much larger question about the practices and activities of some of these providers that I don't think we can technically cover here in this committee or at the city level. I think it's something that should be addressed at the state level, but I do think it does, this approach may help with some of that, but I think it affects everybody. That may be part of this sort of fire response or the emergency response. So I appreciate the lively discussion. I appreciate the testimony. I understand fully what some of the concerns are, and I appreciate the Fire Department and others and the sponsor and otherwise for explaining how we got to this point. With that, are there any other final points before we close out?
Can I just make some concluding remarks real quick?
Councilwoman, please.
Good morning. I just wanted to close out, and I want to appreciate Mr. Chair and everybody who came today, and also committee for your great questions. Again, this is designed to, again, protect during that time that is so critical when people are experiencing this trauma. And you heard to my two constituents that have been dealing with this, I am working with Delegate Ampere. We have a bill that we worked on together in the General Assembly to address the larger, to address the larger issues relative to practices and insurance and all of that that we, the council, do not have authorization to do, but that is why I asked Delegate Ampere to join us today, because we've been working together on this issue. But what we do have the power to do is to make sure that our residents are safe, and that is the residents who are in a disaster scene, but also our firefighters, our first responders, and the mitigation companies. And that's what this bill does, is that provides that safety during that critical time when the services can be provided later, but it also gives our residents a time to contact their insurance companies. We have been working also with DHCD. If you have been to a fire lately, DHCD is sending out crisis services to people that are doing great. They have a lot of information. They're helping people with the housing. They've, we're all working together on the handout with information so that people have a sense of what's happening, and if it's coming from government, right, it can be trusted, hopefully, and that's what we are working on, so that everybody has the right information as they go. And I've been impressed with the two folks that I've been seeing in a couple of fires from DHCD. So, you know, obviously, this is a big issue. This bill looks at one particular instance of the larger issue that we're dealing
This bill looks at one particular instance of the larger issue that we're dealing with, and I would appreciate, I look forward to, you know, further discussion. I know we're not voting today, but I think this was a good discussion, and I look forward to working with the committee and passing this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there are some things that come to mind, reference to the bill. And that is that at times, I think many of us has gotten calls from the fire chief or someone from the fire department letting us know that there's been, you know, a fire in our district, and we arrived on the scene. And once we arrived on the scene, we also seen, you know, other individuals or other groups or organizations that were there to help protect and so those families that was there, like trauma response teams and things of that nature. I recall the traumatic fire that I had on Patterson Park about maybe, I think, two, two and a half years ago, where we lost, my elderly grandmother lost about four relatives inside the home. But I remember seeing, you know, like Red Cross and other groups and trauma response teams that were there, that the family asked for these individuals, like, and we're gonna be trauma, like, they wanted help from any and everybody at that time. And the reason why I'm kind of like on a fence with this bill is because I don't know how much of a difference, like, this may make or may help a family when that family that I was in front of that lost four individuals, you know, reached out, I mean, some of my colleagues were there that night, they reached out for me to even ask who can they get for prayer, you know? So those groups, those individuals that was there, they were there to help that family. I mean, provide them with shelter that night, social workers were there. The fire, you know, fighters had it well secured, I mean, and they felt like it was safe for those individuals to talk, you know, to the families once they have secured everything. So I don't know, again, what does this really do to help or not help those families that's gone through those traumas? You know, I'm sorry to hear the testimony of the one individual that said that he felt like it was overwhelming to him, but I know that in my case, in my district, and I was there when he lost those four individuals, they wanted help from any and everybody that was there that night. And I think that those that had helped those families waited until it was safe to do so per what the fire department deemed it was safe for them to go and talk to those families. That's really what I wanted to kind of like add to the conversation. I'm still, like I said, on the fence of this bill because I just recall that situation where those family members literally asked me and others that were there for just to help, and it was provided those services that night.
So I'll try and add some insight. We talked about a couple of things about who might be allowed on the scene and how the bill is currently structured. So the phrase around who may be allowed does not necessarily exclude anybody else outside of that list. So it's not a definitive list of which we can't go beyond. I think, too, we talked about other folks, like subject matter experts, chemicals experts that might be helpful to the health, to the health department, to the fire department when they're doing the firefighting. And then we also talked about volunteer organizations that may be providing services to families. So you could think a pastor, you could think Red Cross, you could think, you know, social workers or otherwise that are providing volunteer services in some way to folks on the scene. We'll have to tweak that language, and I think Councilwoman Ramos has noted that. I don't know if volunteer orgs is necessarily the perfect language so far, but I do think it's getting to the point that I think you're trying to get to. People need help in that moment, and they don't know what to do, but they need immediate answers, or they may be looking for immediate answers. And so we don't want to necessarily stop those people from getting those services. So I agree with you, and I think there may be a way to get to those pieces, and, you know, before we come to a vote, I think we'll have to come to grips with what that should look like.
But do we still, Mr. Chief, do we still allow, like, those individuals or organizations to have, I think earlier someone testified about those cards, to say that it's safe for those individuals to come on the scene? The reason why I ask is because we could then hold them accountable if they were to cross that line by taking away their card.
So the direct answer, Councilman, is no, that problem, that program does not still exist. All right, I wanted, we have another hearing to get to. Can you hold the comment? You might find, hold, there was a urgent that we address now. Like 60 seconds.
Go for it. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll be brief. I've only been in office four months, I have been to two fires. I certainly see the impact, the potential negative impact to the families and whatnot. I'm struggling to see the impact of like how this would be detrimental to a homeowner or to the structural integrity of a building to just require people to wait until after that's done. And I know this, the vote is not happening now, so I think that's something that, if that needs to be clarified, it is totally not clear to me what that situation, like what the negative impact is at this point to the businesses who have opposed it. It is, I do agree with the idea that it is probably important to have an amendment to delineate when someone can enter the scene, like when a scene is cleared or not. I think that's an important piece for transparency. Lastly, I think this just seems like the type of industry that probably is very honorable actors and some very dishonorable actors. So one, I, on one hand, while I agree with Mr. Boston's suggestion that potentially having an amendment that ensures that we're not, no one is nudging, city officials are not nudging people towards a certain business, that seems totally reasonable. On the other hand, with the newly signed in Consumer Financial Protection Bureau for the city, I think the potential of licensing this industry so that we ensure that, this is obviously not the part of this bill, but I think that's important to consider going forward.
So these, this industry is already licensed at the state level? It's not? All right, well, then that's something we can certainly consider. With that, I want to close out this hearing. We'll put this hearing in recess, we will revisit it. It sounds like we have quite a few things to consider on language and otherwise before we consider anything else, but I want to thank the sponsor, I want to thank the folks who came to testify and the insights that you were able to provide on how this work actually works, and of course, want to thank the fire chief and the administration for the insights that they brought to the table. All right, we're gonna take a one-minute recess so that folks who don't need to be here for this next hearing can clear out, and then we'll jump into Bill 25-0005. All right, we're gonna get started again, call the hearing back to order. We're going to go to the next bill, which is 25-0005, arson offender registry, registration requirement for the purpose of altering the criteria for registering as an arson offender with the police commissioner and providing for a special effective date. This bill is introduced on February 10th, 2025, and is sponsored by the administration and Councilman Schleifer. I'll hand off to you, Tyler, if you want to explain briefly what the bill does, and we'll jump right into it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is quite simple. What we are doing is we are correcting the code where, right now, it says that a person only has to register to the arson offender registry after a subsequent offense. The purpose of this bill is to correct and to say that they have to register on the first offense. So that's all, it's pretty straightforward.
Controversial, kidding. All right, any questions? Seeing no questions, we'll jump into agency reports, starting first with the law department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michelle Toth, on behalf of the law department, we approve for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Michelle. The police department, they're not here.
They stand behind their favorable report, Mr. Chair.
Wonderful, and the fire department.
Good afternoon, we support it also.
Wonderful. Any questions from the committee for any of the agencies? Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you. Deputy Director Schnella, where is this information gonna be housed and is it gonna be publicly available?
The registry? I can follow up with you.
Okay, thank you so much.
I believe the registry lives with the police department, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, and this is gonna be an internal registry or external registry? I wasn't clear about the bill language.
I believe it is internal, but I can follow up with you.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? All right, we will open to public testimony. If there are any folks that are here to testify, I don't see anybody in the room, and I'm not sure if any folks have their hands raised. If you are here, joining us virtually and wish to testify on Bill 25-0005, please use the raise hand function, we'll acknowledge you. Seeing no public testimony, we will close public testimony. Is there a motion to move the bill? So moved by Gray, is there a second?
Second.
Second by?
Blanchard.
Blanchard, sorry, I had a moment. All right, Conway, yes, McCray, Porter. Glover is not here, Blanchard?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
And Schleifer is in excused absence. Did Glover walk away? Let's try and grab Glover, if we can. Okay, Glover is absent. All right, so the bill will pass with five favorable and none opposed. We will hear this at second reader at the next council meeting. Thank you, this hearing is adjourned.